Okay, welcome to our special city council meeting on this Monday, August 26, 2024. Sorry, welcome to our council meeting in the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so. The following will apply. All comments made by the public. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or questions from city council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. With that, I'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for a momentary moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell. Deputy Mayor Matheny. Councilmember Urban.
Here, sorry.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Just to note, if you haven't already recognized, the deputy mayor is with us via telephone, so we do have her with us as well.
And just for purposes of the record, just to make sure there's a physical quorum of three present in the room, which is what enables Deputy Mayor Matheny to appear telephonically.
Okay, and City Manager, do we have any agenda updates?
None at this time.
Okay. We have no presentations at this meeting. This brings us to the citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a sign-in form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as practical thereafter the person addresses the council. Would anybody like to speak in the citizens forum? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There are no items on the consent agenda for today's special council meeting. That'll bring us to the public hearing section. There are also no public hearings at this time. That'll bring us to council action. Madam Clerk, will you please read item one into the record?
Resolution number 2024-148R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida approving the agreement for the purchase of approximately 10.5 acres of certain improved real property located at 3101 Progress Lane for the purchase price of $6,800,000 from G R H Performance St. Cloud LLC and Performance Charter School St. Cloud LLC for public safety, building department, and other public purposes and authorizing the mayor and/or city manager to perform all acts necessary and appropriate to close on the property as provided herein.
Good afternoon, Deputy Mayor and Council. Jason Miller, Fire Chief, here presenting Resolution 2024-148R for the purchase of 3101 Progress Lane. As you know, this is a 10.5 acre property site located at Nolte and Budinger. The seller has agreed with the city's offer of 6.8 million for the purchase of this building. Purchasing this problem or this building allows us to resolve some problems. This will allow us to have a new fire administration building relatively quickly as opposed to waiting for the construction time. It also allows us to have our own entity away from the public safety complex. Initially, the plan was to house Fire Station 32 in the main big building. However, after reviewing the sites more and looking at some options and a little bit of a difference from the staff report that was presented to you, there's another building on site that would be more cost beneficial, both in the short and long term, as far as some remodeling costs we'd save. Ultimately, we'd move our logistics building there in addition to fire admin, so we would have all of our support functions under one roof, which would be nice, it'd be a first time. Some of these cost-saving ventures would be the remodel of Fire Station, current Fire Station 32 into a logistics building. We'll be saving that money there. 2027 CIP, which was for a new fire administration at 12,000 square feet, at that point, we estimated it would be 7.2 million. So we're already money ahead there, not to mention the logistics building at 3 million in 2029. Now, mind you, those are based off of today's construction price estimates, not what they would be in 2027 or 2029. Other costs eliminated would be the mold remediation necessary at Fire Station 32. As you know, recently, we had to do an emergency move of that station, not so much because it was a health hazard, but more so because the contractor couldn't have our firefighters in the building while he was doing the remediation. In addition, for when we were building Fire Station 32, there would be some parking issues, some crew issues as far as how many personnel we could staff out of Fire Station 32. And then also, we'd have to move the logistics facility altogether because they would lose access to that building during the construction of Fire Station 32. This part is courtesy of our Finance Director because he knows the money side a lot better than I do. It would be a debt using the FLGFC loan, estimated 400,000 to 500,000 annual repayment using fire impact fees and 120 funds. Costs will need to include the renovations for the very uses. Staff recommends approval to purchase of the property at 3101 Progress Lane for 6.8 million, and I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
One minute. Mr. Mazzaris, did you have a comment?
Just a one quick comment. So I just want to point out the agreement that was actually signed by the seller, which is an option agreement that the city council was being asked to accept and include, there was one minor change to it. The minor change was to include the total amount of square foot of the structures on there, which is 62,680 square feet, and to identify it's the two buildings that the Fire Chief referred to, and then also there's four modular buildings, three of which are about 11,500 square feet each, and then one of them is about 3,200 square feet. So that, the minor change to the agreement that's in front of you includes the reference to those modular buildings and that square footage.
Thank you. Member Gilbert, Councilmember Gilbert.
For saying 62,000 square feet, so you're looking at about a buck ten a foot.
Something close to that.
Yeah, that's pretty amazing in today's market.
Yep, that's exactly what we said.
Yeah, I just, that's not including the land or land usage. Fire Station 32, would that be eliminated?
No, sir. We would still move forward with the hard construction, starting later this year, once we get a Seymour onboard and awarding that. This would be a more temporary home for them until that construction process is complete, up to about two years.
So they move over there?
Then they would move into their new facility along with, you know, the tower truck would move over and everything would move over at that point. This is just a better stopgap than their current location because that building actually needs some renovations where they're at now.
Yeah. The plug and play in this building, where there's going to be some renovations needed, but it's pretty solid. I think you've viewed it?
We have viewed it. The bones are great, the interior, by and large, you know, according to the building department, we'll be able to remove some walls to create some large storage space for our logistics people. We'll actually have to put some walls in to create some more office space, but by and large, for the price, you just, you can't beat it. I mean, we're talking less than what I would surmise as half the price of what our future fire admin would be.
And that would take the other two off the board, the 7.2 million and the others.
Correct.
So 27 to 29 would be off the board at that.
Correct. So just looking at the numbers we originally had planned on, about 10 million for these two projects, and we're looking at pulling it off for about 6.8 plus roughly 1.2 for renovations.
Yeah, I think it's a brilliant find, so I yield back.
Mr. Mazzaris, did you have another?
Yeah, one more point I forgot to mention. So just want to make sure you clearly understand, there's only one, in addition to the normal title work that you deal with when you're doing with the closing, the only other real contingency on this is that is the city is going to get an appraisal done to see if the property gets, appraises at the value that we're talking. We're confident it does, but that's the only contingency in it. So if that appraisal comes back, showing that this is a good value, we'll move ahead with closing. If it doesn't, then we're hoping to coordinate it so we would, you would see this back at your September, first meeting in September to decide whether the council wants to move forward with it based on their appraisal. So that's the only contingency.
Councilmember Fletcher.
I just want to say outstanding job, absolutely outstanding. You know, you recognize that there is an opportunity for the city to save money, and all city departments worked together to be able to close it in a relatively fast amount of time. This is obviously the first step, but I know with the growth of the city, both the, you know, that puts pressure on both the fire services and police services, and both chiefs are working diligently to address those, the growth that we have, and I couldn't be more happy. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Matheny, did you have any questions or comments on the film?
I didn't. I just echo the sentiments, I think, great job.
Yeah, I would echo that as well. I think this is, this is great. Obviously, we prioritize and value public safety here in the city of St. Cloud, and I think this is a great step forward for that, so thank you all. Do I have a, oh, I'm sorry. Would anybody in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, any further discussion or a motion by the council?
Motion to approve. Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher and a second from Councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell. Motion carries 4-0.
And I thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is council action number two. Madam Clerk, will you please read that into the record?
Resolution number 2024-149R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number 2024-082R, adopted on June 13, 2024, in order to increase the authorized borrowing amount to a supplemented, the description of Project A-1, and providing an effective date.
Jeff Cooper, Finance Director, as mentioned, so this increases the amount of the previous resolution, which was for the 17th Street ball fields for 10 million. This is to add up to an additional 9 million. We don't plan on taking that much, but it will give us the funding not only for the purchase of the land and the buildings, but also for any potential renovation costs that we need for that. As of this morning, the interest rate on this was less than 4%, 3.95 and some change, so that's really good. And eventually, this will be rolled into the bigger bond, which will be coming to you on September the 12th. That includes Public Safety Complex, Hopkins Park, two fire stations, and then, so this is interim financing. FLGFC is Florida Government Financing Commission, and basically, they're interim financing, they're not meant to be long-term financing, but the bond will actually be 20 years. We're not going out beyond 20 years because that's the extent of our 1% fund until it gets re-approved hopefully down the road, but we don't want to, since that's our qualifying source, is the 1% fund. We are going to repay these with parks impact fees, fire impact fees, and police impact fees where they're available, and we determine that, you know, that's the best move at the time. So it may vary from year to year. Staff recommendation is approval, and we're requesting that city council action also be approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilbert?
This bridge loan, how long is its existence? Does it?
We have it set up as five-year, it's got up to five-year balloon payment, but again, the bond resolution actually says in it that as soon as we take the bond, we repay this as part of that. So we're going to be asking you for approval of the bond resolution, but we're not actually going to take the funding until the need presents itself. The longer we wait, we've actually benefited by that already, the rates have come down. So the initial estimate for our bond payment was somewhere in the neighborhood of $5 million per year for what was 77.7 million. Now it's up to 90 million, and the total payment has not changed because the interest rate is less approximate, of course.
I'm sorry, I forgot this part. Would anybody in the audience like to speak to council action item number two? If not, do I have any further discussion or a motion by the council?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher. Do I have a second? I guess I will second. Motion from Councilmember Fletcher, second from myself. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scoop.
Mr. Mazzaris, do you have anything for us?
I do not, sir.
Ms. Miller, do you have anything for us?
I do not, thank you.
Mr. Fletcher, do you have anything for us? Mr. Gilbert?
No.
I have a couple of quick items. First, the paddle boat that's by the lakefront, I've spoken to the captain over there. I've always looked at this item as an economic development matter. I think this brings a lot of potential to our city. He, most if not all of the boats, I believe at the marina, they have power. The boat requires power, he's been running off of a generator, and he's working on wanting to get power over to that boat. It's a pretty significant cost to him. I just wanted to know if there's any appetite or any discussion that could be had on the council on how we can work with him to help provide power to that area at the lakefront. I think it not only would benefit this gentleman for economic development matters to our city, but for anything and any future endeavors that our city has. Have City Manager, do you have any comments?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify the cost, that to install the breaker, run conduit and wiring, install a new panel and a new rack, install the outlets and submetering, material labor, permitting and inspection. We got two quotes from our vendors that we have on continuing services. One was for 20, sorry, more expensive one was for 25,280. The lower was 17,815. Separately, the city is moving forward with also doing some electrical work out there. We want to install 10 new LED bollards with lights that are controlled by a photocell on a dedicated circuit, so we're going to be installing a breaker, running conduit and wiring for that at the same time, and that is $9,050. Just wanted to clarify the work that's going to be done. And that second work is, we're doing it regardless in order to, for the safety of the pedestrians that are getting on and off the boat.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yeah, City Manager, with that being said, if we combine both of those, would we have a discount, more of a discount that we could pass on to the paddleboat folks if we had all that work done combined by the same contractor?
We could ask.
Go ahead.
They were expecting to do the work at the same time. I think they just broke out the proposal into two separate proposals so that we could invoice the captain.
I'd like to ask if you could give, we could give direction to some kind of payment plan for this, for this work for the captain, and the reason why is we are putting lights, we are investing our own time. It is becoming quite the attraction for the city of St. Cloud. I know that they had a bus load of folks come in to utilize that boat, but they're dropped off at downtown St. Cloud and got to spend the money with the vendors in Main Street, so that's a good, I think, business partnership. So if I could give direction to figure out how we can make it less painful, more palatable for it, for this vendor that has the boat, I yield back.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said. I did want to add, so when we put the bollards in, will it include a paved walkway to the boat?
No.
Are we able to do that as well?
So I'm not sure what the path is to the bollards, but I do believe that currently he's operating kind of on our stormwater pond, so that's why instead we had previously stabilized the pathway using limestone, lime rock.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I got.
Do we need to give direction to staff on?
I think we were going to ask for direction, so, Mr. Urban, are you, is the ask from the paddleboat operator for the city to contribute towards the cost of the electricity?
Well, so I-
Because I think the city's already worked towards providing information about how it can get done and has agreed to pay for a portion of it, but I guess, I guess, Ron, you need to know what they, what they ask, right?
Sort of to Councilmember Gilbert's point, I would just like to see the city work with the operator to see, one, if we can combine everything together, maybe that, do it all at once and see if that reduces some of the cost, and, you know, whatever the, obviously, whatever the council thinks, but I think, you know, maybe we can look at any economic development incentives that the city has, or any way that we can help make that cost a little more palatable to the operator, since he does bring a lot of visitors to our city, but of course, I'm just, just one person.
So, sorry, so what you're, you're asking, so, because I believe the, I asked for the city manager to send me over options, and the work for the electrical and the work for the bollards is done by the same company, and I think will be done at the same time, right?
I think so.
So if the overall cost is 17 plus, plus the nine, 9,000, the city's making that contribution to the site. So you're asking if there's anything that we can do, and then we kind of gave direction for maybe payments added to the franchise agreement, and you're asking if there's something that we could add so that that, that cost comes down?
You know, I think if it's added to his agreement, the bollard installation, the $9,000, I think that's a significant contribution from the city, but it does beautify our lakefront area. I just think regardless of whatever has worked out, I think he needs to move forward with getting power to that area sooner than later, so I don't know if we can go ahead and direct staff to move forward with that and negotiate with him on cost.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. So I had previously spoke before his immediate crisis that happened with the generator this weekend, we had previously discussed adding, adding a monthly payment to the franchise agreement to cover the electrical costs. At the time, he was okay with that, and I had spoken with Mr. Mazzaris about making that future amendment to the franchise agreement, but I do think right now, time is the bigger issue for him, so I think there's two different items here, you know. First, does the council want to direct, we have the money available right now in the Parks and Recreation budget. I don't have an economic incentive budget for something like this, so we could move forward this and authorize them to move forward with the work as soon as possible, and then work on an agreement that's at a risk to the city. Or we wait and try to get an agreement on the September meeting, and he'll have to find a generator in the meantime, or the, if the city council wants to reduce the amount that he has to pay, I think that was one of the items that Mr. Urban spoke with me about earlier today. So I just need direction.
Mr. Mazzaris, did you have?
Just generally speaking, there's enough safeguards in that agreement, so if you were to direct the city manager to proceed with the electricity, get the contract out there and start, and if we couldn't ultimately enter into an agreement with the operator with regard to future monthly payments, then I think there's enough safeguards in that agreement that the city could, you know, negotiate to get that taken care of. I don't think, I don't think the city's going to be at a risk. Remember, even for, as best as I can tell you, even for a $17,000 out-of-pocket, the investment by the operator is so much that, and he's so reliant on the city for that agreement to do what he does, he eventually is going to have to work with the city, otherwise he's going to lose a lot more than 17,000, if that makes sense to you, what I'm saying. So I don't think, I think you could direct the city manager to start forward and let us negotiate with the operator on something that would be in payments just to get the power up and running as quickly as possible. And remember, the issue with the bollards and the lights was more of a safety issue and a risk management issue that reduces the city's liability, so there is a, there is a significant amount of, of a need for that, especially as we get into, when the sun starts going down a little sooner, you want to make sure that that's in place.
Okay.
And this electrical would be permitted anyway, so we'll have it from now to the future, till the next riverboat comes and the third and fourth, so it would be a permit fixture, correct?
Yes.
It's got to be 220s, that's what I'm thinking? 3A?
120.
Really? Okay. Wow.
I'd be happy to pass you the quotes.
I just, I thought with that big of a generator and that big of a boat, you'd use three-phase 220, but if it's 120, that's great, that's plugging.
120 slash 240 V service with a two-inch directional bore. And two slash, oh, big old acronym, conductors from the OUC Utility Transformer. Installing a 125 amp single-phase 12-circuit panel with bypass meter, a ticket booth to be mounted on six inches concrete pole rack per site walk. Install 50 amp, 30 amp RV outlets and two 120, 20 amp GFI outlets to be mounted on electrical rack.
Gotcha.
My recommendation would be to move forward with this and direct staff to negotiate this into his agreement as far as his contribution. I don't know if there's any more specific recommendation you need, but-
Yeah, I agree with that. So he would be responsible for the 17,000 split into payments on the franchise agreement. The city will absorb the 9,000 for the, for the lighted balusters or whatever, balsters. And then, of course, time is of the essence, so if Parks and Rec could kind of hide priority on that, so he can operate.
I second that.
That's three. Thank you.
One more item, I'm so sorry to keep this going, but we don't get to get together as often anymore, so I know we've got a big item coming up on the mobility fees, the joint mobility fees with Osceola County. I still have some pretty significant concerns, particularly on the commercial end of things as a city that is so bedroom-heavy. I think one of the issues that I have with this study is that it doesn't account the fact that we need more commercial, we need more jobs in our city, and so I'm very concerned about that. I've been having discussions with our city manager and with our deputy city manager about different ways that we can, can, can help out, help incentivize commercial in our city, but I just, I know that time is of the essence, I don't know if this is even possible, but I would love to call for a joint meeting with Osceola County, since this is a decision we're making together. I think we need to have this discussion and go through this study together because sometimes what's good for Osceola County is different from what is good for our city and the city of St. Cloud. I definitely understand the need for transportation updates and improvements in our city. It's very urgent and significant, but the commercial end of things is really what concerns me, and I just, if we can have that discussion with the county or work together with them, I would like to call for a joint meeting with them, if at all possible. Councilmember Fletcher?
I think that's a great idea. I've mentioned this in the past as well. One of the other things during our mobility fee, one of those workshops, I believe we asked for a menu of options of economic incentives for the mobility fee update, so absolutely, I would 100% support a joint meeting with Osceola County.
And in talking to our city manager, I know that our schedules are kind of all over the place in the next couple of weeks, and the county has this schedule to be voted on. to be voted on within that timeframe. So, I don't know how possible that is, but I do think that with this being such a significant decision, that we need to have that discussion together. And I would, I, if I can have any support from this City Council, I would love to formally request that meeting to Osceola County.
Okay. I was, I was waiting for the third. I got the third. So, I, I just want to clarify scheduling. The mayor is out of town until Thursday, the 5th. Councilwoman Matheny is out of town beginning the 29th, and I think she returns on the 9th, which is the vote. So, from, which is when the county has it scheduled. I'm sorry. So, I will ask the, the County Manager's Office if they can try to schedule something. I think we really need our mayor there. Is that something that we could, that, like, I know we can have a meeting like this without, without the mayor and the deputy mayor. Can you have a joint workshop with, without?
Sure, you can have it with not a full council there. I just, I think the intent was to have a full discussion. So, I think if you can have a full council, it's going to be much better.
Great. So, I'll, I'll try, I'll, I'll push for the 4th or the 5th. We would not have Deputy Mayor Matheny at that, at that meeting because she's on vacation.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Is there a deadline for the adoption of the new, new mobility fees? Is there, like, it has to be adopted?
It has to be adopted before October 1st, or they have to redo the study. So, we have it scheduled, well, we're planning on bringing it forward on the 19th. We had either the 12th or the 19th, but we, we picked the 19th since they were going on the 9th, didn't want to have it the same week. So-
So, if the county could push it back a week, is that even possible to, so that we can have this discussion? I just feel like it's very important that we, for such a significant decision, that we need to be, we need to all be at the table for this and have this discussion. But, of course, I, I know it's, we're sort of, you know, working around their schedule, so.
Can the city, can we notify the, the county as, can the City Council notify the county of our concerns and formally request for them to push it back so that we could have the joint meeting like Councilmember Urban is saying?
I mean, we can ask, we can ask anything we want.
So, the typical protocol is with that direction, the City Manager will reach out to the County Manager and ask if there's a way to do that. There's nothing in that protocol, protocol that prohibits any one of the council members from contacting any members of the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioners, say, hey, we really would like this to be pushed off. Is there a way we can do that? So, that, there's no sunshine law issues there, any of that stuff. And frankly, typically, that helps get some of those things moving forward a little quicker if you do that. So, either, any of you can contact any of them and say, hey, we would really ask you to push it a little bit so we can have, have a joint meeting.
If I could, I don't, I'm not familiar with the county meeting schedule, and I know they've, they do things a little differently now. So, are they still meeting once, once a week?
Well, the problem, I'm telling the county attorney, the problem is they did not want to do this at the time they're doing their budget meetings. And so, that's why they were, they, first, it was scheduled for last week, last week, I think. And then, they pushed it to the 9th because they didn't want to go any further into September because it would run into their budget, and they didn't want to do that. So, that's what you're probably going to hear back.
I agree with, with Councilmember Urban. It is a very serious item, especially with the, the commercial. We've really got to come up with a solution.
And to respond to the comment you made earlier, we already have our Economic Development menu that we were asked to create, and it was going to be part of our package. It, it's not going to be to the City Council for approval until, the plan was after the future land use map was adopted, but we, you know, we can, we're, we're including it as part of the backup because that's what you asked for.
Fantastic. Thank you.
That's all I have. With that, there are no new announcements, and we will adjourn this meeting.